Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners. This is our regular scheduled September 16th meeting. As you, well, agendas are located in the back, we work from a, an agenda. First item of business is going to be the invocation. That will be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation this evening will be provided by T. Butler from the Society of Friends, Rockingham County Friends, who meet here in Wentworth. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Norma Kelly. So if Mr., if T. Butler would come forward and if you'd all stand.
Let us join together in prayer. Oh Lord, our Lord, how majestic is thy name in all the earth. We come to you with reverence and gratitude for the abundant blessings we enjoy. This place of beauty, Rockingham County, a landscape graced with towering trees, sparkling rivers and streams, sprawling fields and pastures, thriving wildlife and friendly small towns, is home to some of the finest people in your creation. For them especially, we are deeply grateful to you. We ask for your guidance as our commissioners search for the best way to lead us forward, and as each of us endeavors to be mindful of your presence in our lives through whatever challenges we face. Since you know perfectly the workings of each of our hearts, we pause together now in the manner of friends called Quakers, to listen for the still, small voice as you speak to us individually in our shared silence. Amen.
You'd remain standing, I'll ask my friend, Norma Kelly, to come forward and lead us into, with the pledge.
Face the flag, please, and hold your hands on your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, T., for the invocation, and Norma for the leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. A little side note, Saturday at 11:00 a.m. we'll be dedicating part of 65 up here in front of the administration, in front of the governmental center for Ray Kelly. If you have an opportunity to come join us, please do. We'll be meeting at the Veterans Park at 11:00 a.m. He was a great man, did a lot for this county and for the veterans of this county. So please join us, and thank you, Norma. Item number four, gentlemen, is the agenda. You've had an opportunity for the last week or so to review the prepared agenda that was proposed to you. Will there be any additions or deletions of any item on the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move for approval of the agenda with the following amendments, that we remove items 8A, 8B, and 8C, and add under new business an item 138 for the approval and adoption of Rockingham County Involuntary Commitment Transportation Plan. And also this evening, we'd like to add closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, point 111, subparagaphes A, subparagraph 3. That's to consult with the attorney and with the same general statute, but subparagaphes A and 5, to instruct negotiating agents on behalf of the county.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second to that motion?
So moved.
Got a second by Commissioner Travis. Any further discussion of that motion?
Chair. Excuse me, could you add personnel to that too, please? Section A6?
A6. Would you, would...
Would you amend it as indicated by our county manager?
A6 for personnel.
So moved.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number five, recognition. I'm going to turn it over to the county manager for item number eight, proclamation, recognizing October 4, 2019, as a National Manufacturing Day in Rockingham County.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas recognized on October the 4th, 2019, as National Manufacturing Day, a celebration of modern manufacturing meant to inspire the next generation of manufacturers, and whereas the Reset Rockingham Partners, Rockingham County Manufacturers Association, Rockingham Community College, Rockingham County Public Schools, Rocketop Apprenticeship Program, and the Rockingham County Center for Economic Development, supporting manufacturing and manufacturing careers. Whereas manufacturing is a cornerstone of our economy with more than 100 manufacturing companies located in Rockingham County, representing 20 percent of the workforce, providing lead, edge, manufacturing jobs for employees and contributing to broad-based prosperity, and whereas Rockingham Community College works with local industries to maximize success through quality workforce training, and whereas one of the keys to America's greatness is its ability to make things, to devise and develop new products from the ingenious and skill of manufacturers, now therefore be it resolved that the Rockingham County Board of County Commissioners does hereby proclaim October the 4th, 2019, as National Manufacturing Day in Rockingham County, in recognition and appreciation of the many manufacturing companies of our community. This the 16th day of September, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I do not, gentlemen, I do not think we need to take any action on that. We'll move right into 5B, which is a resolution recognizing the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution and the founding of the League of Women Voters here in North Carolina.
Okay. You guys will be tired of hearing from me tonight, but whereas an organized movement to infranchise women began in July 1848 at a convention in Sinequa Falls, New York, and whereas through the efforts of brave and courageous women referred to as surprises to sacrifice family, their personal lives, and financial resources for over 70 years to gain equal rights for women, especially the right to vote, and whereas people of all walks of life supported the women's suffrage movement for women to gain the constitutional right of having a voice in making the laws that govern them, and whereas the women's suffrage movement led to the passage of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States in 1919 with ratification by the states by the summer of 1920, and whereas the National Women Suffrage Association dissolved in 1920 to create the League of Women Voters of the U.S. to register and educate all voters, and whereas the League of Women Voters of North Carolina was launched on October 7, 1920, on the steps of the Guilford County Courthouse by gratuitous will, a politically active and tireless young woman from Goldsboro, North Carolina, and whereas more than 120,000 women were registered to vote in North Carolina by 1920, and whereas women today constitute a majority vote in our state and the U.S. and are running for office in higher numbers and more active in the election process than ever before in history. Now therefore be it resolved that the 100th anniversary of women gaining the right to vote and the founding of the League of Women Voters in the United States and in North Carolina is hereby recognizable by the Board of County Commissioners of Rockingham County, North Carolina, for the impact these historic accomplishments have on citizen engagement and the civic life of the community, the state, and the nation. This the 16th day of September, 2019. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Gentlemen, we'll need to take an action on that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
I make a motion, we accept that resolution. As read.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Berger. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Metzler, you're doing a fine job. We're going to move you down to 5C.
Okay, this is a resolution in support of Rockingham County Citizens Academy. Whereas the Rockingham County Citizens Academy was formed in 2012 and was endorsed by the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners as a way to educate, engage, and empower citizens with the behind-the-scenes view of county government in order to help develop future leaders, and whereas this accomplished through a comprehensive 10-week course where participants personally meet and talk with county-elected officials, department directors, appointed board, and committee leaders, and staff learn about and better understand how county government operates, and whereas participation in Citizens Academy allows members of the class to gain a working knowledge about the county's overall organization, vision, mission, goals, objectives, budget, policies, procedures, ordinances, and day-to-day operations to create civic ambassadors who may enlighten others about county government functions, and whereas since its first class in the fall of 2012, there have been eight sessions with a total of 145 citizens completing the 10-week program, with many participants going on to serve on various county boards and committee agencies. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rockingham County Board of County Commissioners that this board will encourage to support the Citizens Academy as it encourages positive community engagement and citizen participation in county government through membership on county boards and agencies and through community involvement, excuse me. This is the 16th day of September, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. Gentlemen, I'll also need an action item on this.
I make a motion for approval, as read.
I got a motion by Commissioner Travis for approval, as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. The planning board has some vacancies. I'm just sharing that with all of our Rockingham County Citizens Academy members. There's other boards within the county that, that needs people to volunteer their time and their energy, and I can think of not of a better group that is more prepared to step up than those that successfully are in the process of completing our Citizens Academy, but thank you for participating and finding out more about how we, your government, operates. Okay? All right, gentlemen, the next item is 5D. This is a resolution honoring our Rockingham County champion. This is a, a new recognition that we're doing. I'm going to ask my, the vice chairman, Commissioner Mark Richardson, to lead this recognition, and I'm going to ask all of you to step around to the front of our podium.
First of all, I need to thank my fellow commissioners for allowing me the extreme honor of presenting our very first Rockingham County champion. And there'll be a resolution read that I suppose somebody would be willing to endorse, but I'm just going to come out and say that our very first Rockingham County champion is Mr. Ron Norwood. And Ron, if you can roll yourself or be rolled, or we'll come get you, to come up and be recognized. As he comes forward, some of you may not know Ron so well, but Ron has persevered through labors and personal tragedies and difficult political and administrative activities for many years and has served this county as an extreme champion for mental health. And without Ron's effort, we'd be in a lot of trouble or more trouble than, than we are. We're always needing to improve our mental health services for our residents. But if Ron Norwood had his way, that problem would be totally fixed, and he's devoted best efforts for, I believe, 30 years, Ron. No, don't try to deny it. But Ron has been involved not only here locally, he's served on several boards. And I also have a, a note from Mr. Trey Sutton, who is the chair of CenterPoint, which is our mental health authority for our regional effort, that wanted to share his congratulations to Ron and let him know that his efforts are not only greatly appreciated by the major board of Cardinal, but are a model for other citizens that'd be willing to serve. So Ron, we've got a couple of gifts for you, but before we do, so you're official, I'm going to ask the county manager to once again read a resolution in support of Ron Norwood.
One second. How about I give you the read? That, that'll work. I could've made something up, but I...
Not your worst.
Ron's a great guy. Resolution honoring Charles Ronald Ron Norwood, whereas Ron Norwood, a resident of Eden, North Carolina, since 1965, and whereas over the course of his life, he served as a youth and adult program director with the Young Men's Christian Association in Eden, was executive director for the Rockingham County Fund Incorporated, and since 1986 has served as development and property manager for the American Red Cross Housing Development Service Incorporated in Greensboro, and whereas Ron Norwood has served his community in numerous ways, including councilman for the city of Eden, former chairman of the Eden Planning and Zoning Board, officer of the Area State Mental Health Board, past president of the Rockingham Opportunities Corporation, member of the County Emergency Food and Shelter Board, member of the Rockingham County Water and Sewer Advisory Committee, and whereas Ron Norwood's volunteer spirit has led him to give of his time and talents through service that includes the Eden Kiwanis Club, the Community Living Association of North Carolina, the Eden Chamber of Commerce, the United Way, and the Eden J.C.'s, and whereas Ron Norwood has partnered with the August Collectors Group to bring August camera enthusiasts from all over North America and Australia to, what'd I do?
No, you did Rockingham.
Okay, Rockingham County. For annual gathering, and whereas Ron Norwood has enriched Rockingham County by generously giving of himself and sharing his time and abilities with its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners that Charles Ronald Norwood be honored as a Rockingham County champion for his generous community spirit and his contributions to citizens of Rockingham County this 8th day of, what's this, 8th day of July? It's the September the 16th, 2019. Phew, the end.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I'll, at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve that proclamation. I got a motion by Commissioner Craig Travis, do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Commissioner Berger. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you very much, congratulations. We also want to give you just a little piece of Rockingham County, a little tail pin to carry with you, so wherever you go, you'll always have Rockingham County be part of your travels. And to let you know, there's this plaque, we're not going to give you the plaque. We're going to hang the plaque on the wall out in the lobby and for, as a remembrance and for future recognition. So your name's going to be etched on that plaque hanging in the governmental center from this point forward. So thank you very much.
So Ron, I'm going to present this plaque you can take home with you that has the resolution, and I, we pondered over this for some length of time, though your name came up early and first probably. Nobody compared with the amount of volunteer work that you've done and the significance of what you've done. So it's with a great pleasure that I'm going to get you this, and we're going to get the other plaque to get a picture even though you don't get to take it home.
Is there anything you'd like to say? I'm going to let you say a few words.
Chairman Perdom, Vice Chairman Mark, it's been over 40 years. The first appointment from the county commissioners was September 1973. And the recognition that I appreciate the most is the recognition that the commissioners gave me by trusting me to represent Rockingham County as citizens in all the various mental health boards that I have been on over these years. My son got me here by a little tail. I had not, I was not anticipating this, but I certainly appreciate the recognition. I appreciate the support that I've had for mental health programs. The chairman and Mark have been behind, you know, all kinds of ways that we were doing things to improve the mental health services for citizens of this county, and I appreciate the opportunity. And one of the pride things was that I served on the water and sewer thing for the county, but I really felt I was moving up when I was made chairman of the garbage for the landfill So I appreciate the recognition and the opportunities to serve this county.
Thank you. I will get a couple of pictures here. Will it Charlie, let you hold this and she right there. And we'll stand here with you, get a couple.
For your other plaque.
There you go. All right, they're coming next. All right, I'm going to get white here, I'm going to get the family to come up here. Gentlemen, we can move right behind you. How about that? The family will come up, take a picture, and the commissioners.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Stand right here, too.
Yeah, tell me you're here.
Come on, John. Come on, John, just push your chairs back and stand right here. How about that? And, hold on, we'll get...
Thank you.
Come on, Greg, Greg, stand. At this time, we're going to take a 10-minute recess. We got some refreshments in back and give everybody an opportunity to greet and congratulate Mr. Norwood. We stand in recess for 10 minutes. All right, I call the meeting back to order. We on item number six, gentlemen. This is the consent agenda. These are non-controversial items, you've had an opportunity to review. Anyone in the audience that is looking at the agenda that has any questions about any of the items on the consent agenda, feel free to contact our county attorney, Mr. Lance Metzler, and he'll be happy to review any of them with you. Having that said, gentlemen, as there are, I'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda. So moved. I got a motion by Commissioner Berger to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries. Item number seven is our public comment section. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to ask our county manager to read our public comment disclaimer prior to our public comments. We have seven individuals that have signed up to speak tonight.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The public comment period should be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Remarks should be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners and not to staff, the audience, or media. The chairperson will open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and physical address when he or she approaches the podium. Any citizen shall be allotted three minutes. Citizens will be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic by utilizing one more attendee's time. This will allow no more than six minutes. I will time the speakers and notify the chairman of their limit. The time clock will start with three minutes unless yielded time to six minutes. You will hear a beep at one minute to alert you to wrap up your comments. If you are to yield time or time is yielded to you, then please let the chairman know in advance. Speakers will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of a personal nature which insults or demeans any person of which when directed at a public official is not related to his or her official duties. The Board of Commissioners may accept written comments in lieu of oral statements. Written statements can be delivered to the county manager's office. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. The first item, the first person signed up to speak tonight is Mr. Bobby Stanley. Mr. Stanley, if you'd come forward, give us your name and address, and Mr. Metzler will keep the clock.
Okay, Bobby Stanley, 628 Young Road, Stoneville, North Carolina 27048. And I came over to talk about the Stoneville, the Rotary Stoneville Fall Festival, and it'll be coming up on the 28th, and this is the last commission meeting before. To invite anyone that may see this or listen to this, to come to Stoneville, you'll enjoy this, and all five of y'all need to come. And as far as that's concerned, the River Fest will be, I think, yeah, there's some coming Friday and Saturday in Eden, so go with that, too. It's all good for county business. I want to make a comment about Mr. Butler, she's a Quaker. The three of our presidents are Quakers. Connects to James Madison married one, Dolly. She was born in Gilbert County, and Herbert Hoover's mother was a Quaker, West Branch Owl, and Richard Nixon's mother was a Quaker. These three out of 45 is pretty doggone good. But anyway, going back to the, to the festival, the Rotary Club in Stoneville does this thing. It's four Rotary Clubs in this county. They do good for this county. They are an asset to this county, and anyone that's listened to this, please think about it. We need people in the Rotary Club, and especially the younger people. Some of them, like me, they're getting old. They ain't going to be around too much long. And in Stoneville, on behalf of Stoneville or any other fall festival in this county or Rotary Club, please come out and support our county. I just want to tell everybody, two and a quarter cent of this sales tax stays here in this county. On a million dollars, that's quite a bit. And the community college now does get a quarter cent. That's how you make it work, and it doesn't affect your property. And again, I want to thank you people for this time to try to promote our fall festival in Stoneville. Rotary has a lot of good, hard work, these people, to make this county a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Appreciate your service to the community, too, being a former county commissioner and as a Rotaryian, thank you for what you do. All right, our next speaker is Mr. Royce Richardson. Mr. Richardson, you come forward and I'll give you your name and address.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, good evening. My name is Royce Richardson. I live at 300 West Hunter Street in Madison. I've come before you tonight to try to answer a question that I believe you all, some of y'all, had last month about the elections coming up in November. As you know, we do vote, this November, we vote every November. This November will be municipal elections in the, in the municipalities. The question, I believe, was how much the, how much each vote costs the people in the county or the municipalities. Reason I said try to answer, we really don't know. We've never been asked this question before. So the only thing, you all have a copy of a letter that I sent to the county manager and copied you all on, back in August, stating that the, the cost for the November municipal elections would be $21,073. Now, to figure out how much each vote costs, we'd have to know how many people are going to vote, and we don't know that yet. Back in 2017, we had 4,056 people to vote in the municipalities, and if we had that many this year, that would cost $5.20 per vote. 2016, we had 16 percent of the eligible voters in the municipal areas to vote. 2015, we had 15 percent. So to know, to know how much each vote's going to cost, we can let you know that after November, when, when we figure out all the, all the cost and all the number of people that vote. But anyway, I thank you for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Third person signed up is Ms. Diane Parnell. Ms. Parnell, if you'd come forward and state your name and address. Ms. Parnell, if you'd come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name's Diane Parnell. I live at 220 Woodland Drive in Reedsville, and I come to speak to you as the chairman of the Republican Party. Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight. My intent on coming to speak tonight was to pat you on the back for the good job that you have done of being good stewards of the county taxpayer money. The excess that you have seen in the Board of Elections' budget, you've managed to cut, and I think that that is remarkable, and we as taxpayers recommend you for doing that. That's exactly what you were supposed to do. The question is, do other departments have this much excess in their budgets as well? I'd like to think that all county departments would be as run as well as the Board of, the Register of Deeds. Ben Curtis is the first Register of Deeds in the last fifteen years to have a positive cash flow. He has added services in this Republican economy and not added personnel. In fact, he's added funds to the county budget. And I'd like for everyone to know that. He has cut the budget for his department by $10,000. He's added a notary service. He's added passport services. He's made the veteran services mobile, so the veterans don't actually have to come to the courthouse. And this was all within the first six months of him taking office. To this day, the Register of Deeds office has generated over $75,000 in additional income for this county, and he's done that without adding any staff. A point of contention with some folks in this room is his raise. Well, let me address that, and let me note that his raise has his pay well below the former Register of Deeds. The only, and he only recently surpassed the appointed Register of Deeds, the one that was appointed and not elected. Who would begrudge a man a raise that has been in this Register of Deeds office and done such a great job and is making money for the county? $75,000 is nothing to sneeze at. I'd like to thank those here that came in support of Ben Curtis tonight. He's never asked for extra personnel. He's never asked for more money for his budget, and he never asked for that raise. But I stand behind him. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Parnell. The fourth person signed up is Ronald Price. Mr. Price, if you'd come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Chairman, Honored Commissioners of the Rockingham County. I'm Ron Price. I live at 218 Cedar Run and had its mailing address of Reedsville, about eleven in the county. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. Immediately prior to this meeting here, I was with you at Rockingham County High School, where you were collaborating with the school board to save money and inspect what was going on. I applaud what you're doing because you are working to save the taxpayers' money in this county and improve performance. And there's certainly a lot of benefit that can come from collaboration. Shortly, well, sometime several months ago, I sent a letter to the commissioners, you all, about the school system because I had questions. We were looking to finance the apprentice schools and training, business training in the RCC. And there was a question whether we're gonna pass that quarter cent sales tax increase. I proposed an alternative, and it was based on information that I found while I was looking at the budget, going back through the years. Twelve years ago, when I went, came on the Board of Education, we had a budget. At the time I wrote that, twelve years later, our budget was in excess of what it was back then, twelve years before. In the meantime, we had cut 477 employees, according to CAFER report, and we'd lost over 2,000 students. Why was our budget higher? That was a question I posed, and it was something that needed to be looked at. That information found its way back to the superintendent and the board chair, and they took action to try to eliminate the problem. But the factor is that there's a lot of money to be saved in the collaboration, and I commend you in working with the commissioners because you are looking to save that money, just as you have with the Board of Elections and in other departments. There's, there's money to be saved out there. We've got a lot of schools, there's, should be surplused. They've just taken action to deal with one school, to correct that and move, put it on the public auction. But there's a lot of opportunity to save money, and I know you can, can collaborate with the school board and other departments looking to save that money. So, I hope we will continue to do that, and I'll be glad to work with you in every way we can to do that. And I thank you for the opportunity to come and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Fifth person signed up is Mr. Don Powell. Okay. I didn't see him in the audience, but I'll make sure he didn't step in. All right, next we have Ms. Roxanne Griffin. Ms. Griffin, if you'd come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Roxanne Griffin, 108 South Wilson Street, Madison. Thank you for this opportunity to address here. I'm here to talk about fiscal responsibility too and elections. I have some questions about some of your previous budget decisions. One of them is that the Board of Elections, I believe, asked for 2,000 hours of part-time employment help or budgeting. And that was cut to $1,000 or 1,000 hours at $10 an hour. And then, they also asked for overtime pay for full-time employees. And I don't, I've talked to an awful lot of voters, and I can't think of a single one that hasn't said that our elections are run very smoothly and that they appreciate the job that those three full-time employees do. So, I have this question about, we have three full-time employees. One of them is a salaried employee, and the other two are hourly wages. And you're cutting 1,000 part-time hours at $10 an hour, and you've cut the amount that they asked for overtime for those pay, those full-time employees. And they need the, the full-time, they need those overtime hours in order to do their jobs as well as they have, but now they're going to have to make up for the scutwork jobs with full-time employee overtime. And you cut their amount on overtime down to $1,000, and that's fine, and you rolled it over into comp time, but I wonder how, if you're already working plenty of overtime hours and you are now short those part-time cheaper hours, how you're gonna justify that in the future? Because in paying overtime and comp time, if they don't take those comp hours, then when they retire, or quit, or are fired, or whatever, that's gonna be kicking the can down the road, and the taxpayers will be paying three times as much for the scutwork as they could've paid upfront to part-time personnel that would help to make our elections run smoothly. So, I have a question about this. You know, what is the value of putting more work, making possibly the elections run less smoothly, and, and making the taxpayers pay three times as much? So, that's my point. I hope you'll think about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. And the last person I have signed up to speak under public comment is Mr. Steve Bowles. Steve, if you'd come forward and give us your name and address.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Steve Bowles. I'm at 403 Dollar Street in Madison, and I'm here to periodically give you an update on the rescue squads, the three rescue squads, and the activities that we continue to perform and how we're doing as a part of your overall emergency services response. I'm here tonight as Assistant Chief of Madison Rockingham Rescue Squad, but I also represent Eden Rescue and Reedsville Rescue for the purposes of tonight's comments. First, let me say we appreciate the support that the county and the commissioners and those before you have provided over the years. We're at about the sixty-two-year point. We started in 1957. And for whatever reason, following through the cracks, we've been the only part of emergency response that has not been publicly funded. All of the fire, all of EMS, all of law enforcement is either municipal, county, state, federal, or combination. So, the three rescue squads continue to do all we can with what we have and try to do the best job we can for the people of Rockingham County. Between the three squads this year, we will probably hit, if not exceed, 10,000 calls, and that's essentially on a volunteer basis. That's over, well, if you, if you, if you back up and look, one or two of the squads will probably hit or exceed 4,000 calls apiece this year. That's a good 10 calls a day if you average it out, so that's a pretty good load. We continue to be your primary response every day for car wrecks, and as traffic picks up on I-73 and the other highways in the county, that continues to be a challenge. You never know what's traveling up and down the road. The waterways continue to be a challenge. Those often happen in the middle of the night, when, when a lot of folks are at home sleep. It may be 11, 12, 1, 2 in the morning, and we're out on the river searching for an overdue tuber. So, typically, those have a positive ending, but it is taxing upon our resources. And of course, as you're well aware, the opioid heroin crisis continues to be just that, a crisis. We continue to respond to those calls on a daily basis. And so, with that said, we continue to do all we can, the best we can with what we've got. If you ever have any questions, concerns, comments, inquiries, please let us know. Please let me know. We are completely transparent. We'd be glad to tell you or give you anything that you would like. So, with that said, I thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rest, thank you, Steve. About rusted you. That concludes public comments. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. Gentlemen, we pulled item A, 8A, 8B, and 8C. And for you in the audience, if you're here to speak on either one of those items, we will not be hearing it tonight. Unfortunately, we had an issue with our notification process at no fault of our own, and we pulled them just in a, to remain transparent and to make sure that everybody was notified that we were having those hearings. So, if you're here for those, I apologize. But we will hear item 8D. So, I'm gonna ask Carrie Spencer, Director of Planning and Zoning, to come forward and share with us 8D before we go into public comment. The public here.
Pretty straightforward text amendment that has been requested by the surveying and development profession. Our, in order to record a map of survey as a plat in Rockingham County, you have to have owner's signatures notarized. The text amendment removes the notary requirement and replaces it with a, a test requirement, which is a typical sort of witness typically done by the surveyor to attest that the owner is indeed who they say they are. This, I will say that this will save a lot of time because the notary requirement creates a lot of delay. It makes difficulty for owners and surveyors and developers, and this will streamline the process. I can tell you that Guilford County has the attest requirement. All the surrounding municipalities have the attest requirement versus the notary requirement. The county attorney reviewed the text amendment and recommended, in his opinion, it would be best to have the notary requirement in there and an abundance of caution, but we discussed it, and it's a, not a legal requirement, so the attest will really be adequate, more than adequate.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen, before we ask any questions, we will have to have a public hearing on this. So, at this point in time, I declare the public hearing open regarding the text amendment to the Rockingham County UDO. There is, no one has signed up to speak in favor or against on the sign-up sheet. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this particular item, either in favor or against? Is anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in favor or against? That being said, I will close the public hearing. All right, gentlemen, do you have any questions, Ms. Spencer, or is there any discussion? Or is there a motion?
So, we're basically removing the notary requirement and just letting them sign it as far as the, the plats, correct?
But instead of, there will be an attest line for the surveyor or developer to witness the signature of the owner.
Is that required?
It is not required, but it's definitely, it's definitely recommended. And it's typical. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a standard industry practice, I will say, Kevin.
Okay.
Is typical mean consistent with other counties?
Correct.
All right, gentlemen, I have a motion by Commissioner Richardson for approval of the request as presented to the UDO. I got a second by Commissioner Travis. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Spencer. All righty, item number nine. You should've stayed up here. This is discussion of notification mailings for rezoning cases.
So, this, this is a subject that's come up a lot since I've been here and apparently quite a bit from before, and this is about making sure that the appropriate number of citizens are informed about a zoning case that's in their neighborhood so that they can have an opportunity to, to speak about it, to give input about it. And there's been a lot of discussion. Statute requires notice to adjacent properties only when there's a public hearing. We've done a poll of other counties, just to give you an idea of what others are doing. There's a variety. You'll see some go out to 500 feet, some go out to 1,000, some individual municipalities. Summerfield, for instance, goes out to a quarter mile. If you, I will suggest that if you get too broad a range, you start to get into trouble. You know, if you're gonna go a quarter mile, then why not go further than that? The idea of a direct mailing is to notify those that are immediately and directly impacted by a zoning. So, there's other tools to use to, as I allude to at the end, to consider other methodologies. And if you're interested in that, I can write up some recommendations for things like an open house that invite anyone in the area, more web presence perhaps about zoning cases and notifications, other options like that. So, at this point, county manager and I were asking you to decide on a notice radius.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Travis?
Thank you. Carrie, just let the audience know exactly what you do now to notify the people in the area for, from a land being zoned.
Right now, this minute, we're sending a mailing to all the properties within 1,000 feet of the property boundary.
Property boundary.
Yeah. So, that's, that's going to be a variety of numbers, depending on how large the property being rezoned is.
And you're also putting a sign out by the road?
Yes.
And you're, you're sending mail, right?
Correct. Correct, and an advertisement. When, for public hearings, there's a required advertisement in the newspaper.
Right. And for a county like this, that most people have two or three acres, do you think 1,000 feet is appropriate?
I think that 1,000 feet has become more appropriate in areas that are quickly developing.
Right.
I, I think that, I'm not sure about the entire, the entirety of the county, but in areas that are developing more quickly, I think it is good to inform a little bit broader audience. And do you mean 1,000 feet versus adjacent?
Yes. Because most time, 1,000 feet will only hit one neighbor. Especially if you're out in 158 or Bethany area, people have got a lot of land.
That can be the case.
Yeah. And then, then you throw in the problem we've been having with mail, which I still have not wrapped my hands around yet. I do not understand why it takes that long to deliver mail.
We, so far, we've, we've done, we've experimented with a lot of different post offices, and I will say that Reedsville, City of Reedsville Post Office comes out as a winner. Takes two to three days for mail to get out to property owners. So we've reduced that time when we use, when we use Reedsville. And I'm not sure exactly what the, what the answer is there, but that's what we're going to go with.
Where, where'd the 1,000 feet come from?
A variety, other municipalities using.
But we do not have an ordinance that says, we do not have an ordinance right now that says 1,000 feet.
Correct. We do not.
So we've just kind of made up a distance at this point.
Well, this is, this is something that the Town Manager and I did. We spoke about this, or you, you all spoke about this at the last public hearing and talked about expanding that radius without a decision. But we spoke about it and made the decision to exercise caution, knowing that there's been a lot of public input and controversy to go ahead and do those mailings. And we can, we can stop that practice, but we felt it prudent in light of the public input you've been getting.
Yes. My issue is creating a legal argument for someone to use because we're arbitrarily coming up with numbers without us setting a policy.
You're, that's correct. And this is, if we're going to do anything, we need to change our development ordinance to.
Right.
Yeah, to codify it.
Well, may I add, Mr. Berger, the, the, actually, our current ordinance, as I read it, mirrors what the statute reflects. So the mailed individual notice would go, would be mailed to abutting properties.
Just, just adjacent properties, yeah. That's what the ordinance currently says. And so based on your decision, we'll leave it at that or recommend a text amendment to codify anything different.
And what do most jurisdictions do?
There is a, a list attached. I think that it's about half and half, adjacent and with a buffer.
100 to 2,500.
And my guess is that that was, that it's likely to have been in a response to particular citizen input in one place or another.
Commissioner Richardson?
Ms. Spencer, I believe as a matter of caution, you've been exercising 1,000 feet for the recent rezonings.
That's correct.
On average, I realize it's going to vary from case to case, what does it cost in both money and time? If you go from, I'm going to give you some right there, 1,500 and just adjacent.
The postcard, a postcard costs 66 cents to mail between the cost of the card, the, and the postage. Doesn't include printing costs, sort of, I'm sorry.
Listen, what's it been costing you? What have you paid in the past? You just did three of these, I know.
Yeah. $25 for, for 1,000-foot radius for the, to, actually, $25 for three different zoning cases that were not on this agenda after all.
Oh, all three of them?
Mm-hmm.
How about in personnel time?
We're pretty good at it, so it wouldn't take any longer to send it to an adjacent property owner than to 1,000-foot radius. I mean, honestly, it's, it's just a printing additional cards. I don't feel like it's a big drain on personnel. And I'm just being honest. I'm not supporting one way or the other. It's really not a big drain. The newspaper advertisement is what's expensive.
Yes. And that's going to happen regardless if you're adjacent, what's a half mile?
Correct.
You're going to have to do the newspaper. And we're doing it also, we, we're also placing that advertisement on our county website?
Yes. Yes.
And once we have the peg channel.
Yeah, I'm taking that, too.
Yes, exactly.
Gentlemen, I think as we've had, we've discussed this several times, it's come up. I appreciate what Commissioner Berger said. Unfortunately, we've, we've, we need a policy, and we need to follow the policy. And if our policy is, if this board decides whatever distance, I just think we need to continue with that with each one of our zoning cases, as Commissioner Berger had spoken about. So to me, 1,000 feet's fine, but I'll leave it up to the board.
I'm good with 1,000 feet.
Is that a motion?
Well, and let me add this. I've seen your signs on the side of the road, too, to let neighbors know of a zoning request in the area. I really think we need to look at them signs, too, because honestly, if you ain't right up on it, you don't see it. So either you need to make it bigger or make it a different color where people can see it.
And there's, there's a variety of options. I can put, for any of the big giant Z on the back, or, I mean, there's a lot of different ways to do that.
The only thing I ask, Mr. Chairman, if you, 1,000 feet's fine, I can make that a motion, but we also need to do something about the signage they, they put out, too, to notify the neighbors.
I would make an observation, fellow commissioners, I would make an observation that it seemed like all of our complainants to the recent rezonings come from four or five miles down the road.
It does.
So the word is getting out.
That's a very good point.
Yes. Commissioner Hall looks like he's trying to say something.
Yep, yep. I've got a question, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And is, is this going to be rewriting, codifying this into a county policy? Is that what we're talking about?
I would actually put it into the Unified Development Ordinance so that the development community understands and a zoning applicant, it's very clear what the expectation is.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner, in light of that question, if, if that text is actually proposed to be amended to reflect this new language, you would need to go back to, go back to the, through the process.
Correct. As a text amendment, back through the planning board and to you as this other text amendment did tonight.
It's fine with me.
Yeah, I think that's what it needs to be. I agree.
Well, and before we order, we were about to order some additional signs. Before we do that, I'll, I'll give you some options and cost, if you're interested, to know what that cost would be to replace all of them.
The issue is to notify folks, that's a requirement, that are affected. And I don't think we've gotten too many folks saying, we didn't, showing up saying, we didn't know what was going on. So, I mean, adding all this extra stuff is more bells and whistles than are really necessary.
And it may be, ideally, that your land use plan speaks to the broader community, and then an individual zoning case is required by law to be notified to those immediately impacted.
Right. And the property owner should be able to do what they want to do with their own property and not have the neighbors tell them what to do with their property. And so.
That's true, too.
The, I got no issue with 1,000 feet. Letting folks know, but, but getting bigger signs and doing all this other stuff is just a waste of time.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. I do agree in part with what you, with your statement as far as property owners, property rights. However, I think, it's just me, you know, I just don't think you ever go wrong with transparency and making sure. I've had some folks come to me and say, did not realize that that was taking place. And it seems to me that this is an opportunity, another opportunity to get the message of what's going on in the county out there. But anyway, I appreciate everybody's comments. I think we're all on the same page. We just, I think we all, in my discussions with each commissioner, I think we all agree that we need a policy, we need to follow the policy and be consistent with the policy. And that's the big reason for having this discussion. And so if whatever this, what's the pleasure of the board at this point is, that we're going to send it back to the planning department at this point? I mean, to the planning, zoning planning committee?
For 1,000 feet.
With the recommendation of 1,000 feet? What, what action would you like us to take tonight?
It would be to, to ask the planning board to hear a text amendment to change notification to 1,000 feet, if that's your pleasure.
For the Unified Development Ordinance.
In the ordinance, yeah. Text amendment in the UDO.
UDO. I'll make that motion if you need.
I got a motion to change the text amendment in the UDO to 1,000-feet notification. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Carrie. All right. Item Number 10. Ms. Robin Yant, approval of the appointment of one citizen to the three, from the three recommendations to fill the unexpired term of the TDA Advisory Board. The term expires June 30th, 2021. Gentlemen, you were provided three names. I'll entertain a motion, or we can have discussion, or however you want to proceed with this.
Let me find it. It's on, what, page 90 or 100? I'll make a motion for Daniel Joyce.
I got a motion for Daniel Joyce to fill the unexpired term.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make, I'll second that motion.
I got a second by, a motion by Commissioner Berger, second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item Number 11. Mr. Derek Southern. He's going to talk to us a little bit about the credit card policy.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm here tonight to present to you the credit card policy for the overall county for accepting credit cards. This policy was put together by polling several, several counties throughout the state on the policies they had and the policies in regards to accepting with a centralized platform. So lots of counties have policies that where there are multiple credit card vendors. This is following a policy based upon one central vendor. Main highlights of it is the focus on PCI compliance, which is what we are required for financial audits. So it's protection of the data and making sure that our employees are handling the data and transactions properly. It is also making sure that we are established in segregation of duties to make sure people that can accept credit cards are not the ones that can refund. And then the people that are balancing are also not the ones that are accepting payments. And the ones that are handling the deposit, deposits also do not handle accepting of payments. This is overall policy for the county. Individual departments can have more stringent guidelines as long as they meet the guidelines based upon Visa and MasterCard's requirements. So there are certain things that Visa and MasterCard have. If a department chooses to go with more stringent guidelines than these, they have to come to finance and IT, and we have to make sure those are approved by those. So such as, a big question is accepting signatures or not. And a big one is, oh, do we have to keep a signed copy of the receipt, or does the customer have to take one? Currently, Visa's requirements on those is we do have to have a signed receipt because we are taking the transactions in person, and we have to validate that that is the person. So for us on refund policies, it does require that we keep that signed receipt on hand. Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hall.
Yes, I've got a couple of questions, Derek. In looking over the policy, it doesn't really talk about verifying the ID of the cardholder. Is that something in there? Did I overlook that?
You did not overlook that. That is not in the overall line policy for reasons is businesses can come in. So we do have a signed signature, but we can't validate their driver's license based upon the name on the card. So we didn't want to include that in the overall policy. Individual departments, they can have getting a copy of the ID so we can validate who is signing. As part of the transaction, it is a screen that we fill out that who is present and then who is, who the card information is. So we do collect both of those information, but it's not in the policy about validating it with ID.
So are we providing the department's guidance?
Yes.
Very good. The other question that I had was, and you touched on it just a minute ago, but the merchant agreement. Is this policy in compliance with a merchant agreement with the card providers?
This policy is in compliance with merchants' agreements, yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Is it, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. I have a question for you, Derek. Why are we allowing each department that accepts credit cards to, to change the policy, make it more stringent? I mean, I would think that we would want the policy consistent from one department to the next, so that we treat, each department is treating all of its customers the same.
Some of them, such as public health, on the requirement that the information they can get from the customer is restricted, so we're allowing them to collect that information differently.
Okay.
And it is a regulation thing of what they're allowed to do.
Okay. I just want to say thank you. I know that it's something that you and your staff and the County Manager have been working hard to get the credit and the debit cards operational in the departments. And I know I've been a thorn in your side in moving forward with that, and I appreciate you doing that. The convenience of having the, to do business that way is, it far outweighs the risk in today's society.
That is correct. Thank you.
Any comments? Any questions? Any motions?
Mr. Chairman, one more. How much in charge backs have we had so far?
In charge backs today?
Charge backs are wonderful.
Zero.
That's good to know.
I was very impressed with the email you sent with the amount of business going through.
Yeah. Would you like me to say?
Can we share it?
Currently today, we have three active departments, animal shelter, public health, with the clinic downstairs, and registrar deets. We've done 270 transactions, nearly $7,000 currently right now. And tests is the sheriff's department and the dentist office. And very soon, will be added to that test environment is the landfill. And then after we roll out with those, we'll be moving to the libraries as well.
And just for, for the audience, this is not reducing our revenues because any credit card fees are passed on to the customer. They're, they're given the option to pay by credit card, and then with that, there is a surcharge for charging the item through the credit card with all except for public health. Is that right?
That is correct. All departments, we're passing the fee along to the customer as part of the process. Let's say that it's a $10 fee. We come up to a screen, and then the fee is announced to the person taking the money. We, we tell the customer that, they acknowledge it. Once we, they say okay, then they have to sign off accepting that fee. So all fees that the credit card company would process are passed on to the customer.
And public health, those fees, the vast majority of them anyway, are set by the state, and that's why we can't pass that on.
That is correct. Because there's floating scales of what can and can't be charged for some of those. So we are, we chose as a county to not raise fees and take, eat those fees ourselves.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we accept the credit card policy as presented.
I got a motion to accept the credit card policy as presented by the Chief Information Officer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Berger. The motion was made by Commissioner Hall. All, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Item 12A, consideration retaining Roy Sawyer's Rockingham County update broadcast to the Board of Elections, regular meetings for the remainder of 2019-20, beginning in October. The cost of 2.75 a month for nine months totaling $24.75. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was approached by the chairman for the Board of Elections, and we discussed the possibility of the Board of Elections having their meeting broadcast like the Board of Commission meetings that meetings have been done. He said that he had discussed this at one of the, one of the meetings with his board. I told Chairman Richardson that the funding for this would have to be approved by you all because we don't have it in the budget. So if you all are interested in having their meetings broadcast, as was discussed in their elections meeting, it would cost 2.75 per meeting, and approximately $2,475 would be for the remaining nine months of the, the year. Though currently, we don't have that budget for. So if you do take it, I would recommend using the contingency fund for that.
Okay. All right, gentlemen. All right, is there any discussion?
Well, as, as you previously stated, Chairman, transparency. I think folks would, it'd be good for everybody to know what's going on there. So I'd make a motion that we approve this.
Second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Berger, a second by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? No further seeing or hearing. No further seeing, or hearing, no further discussion requested. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
I've had some folks tell me that at times their meetings are a little cramped, and I checked with Kelly, just, I know we've got three of those board members here. I believe these, our commissioner chambers are open and available on your normal meeting time, I believe, for the rest of the year. I think there was a conflict in November, but I believe one of their members said they usually don't meet in November because of the elections at times, so just wanted to pass that along.
I think that's a great idea. It certainly would probably make it easier with Roy to, to work out of this location since he's already has everything set up. So, Mr. Manager, please make that offer.
Okay.
All righty, item number B, reclassification of the strategic management planning director position to assistant county manager.
Yes, Mr. Chair. We've discussed this periodically over the past couple of years, individually with you all, and you also had mentioned that in my performance evaluation of an administrative, excuse me, an assistant county manager. Paul Murray's been here for several years, and I would like to, for you all to consider making him, creating the position and making him the assistant county manager. He will oversee the operations of departments, which I've identified with him, and will reveal tomorrow, when we have our department head meeting. I've evaluated salary comparisons of our peer counties, and would recommend he be moved from a pay grade of 25 to a pay grade of 31, and set a salary at the midpoint, which is $99,404. The average salary for the assistant manager in those populations between $50,000 and $100,000 is $113,000. So if you took action, it would be to approve the position of the assistant county manager, set the position at pay grade 31, and approve the salary.
Thank you, Mr. Metzler. All right, gentlemen, you've heard the recommendation and request by the county manager, is there any discussion?
Well, just for the public, I believe some of our municipalities here in our county have assistant managers.
Yes.
And the size of our county, when we compare to, to counties of similar size in North Carolina, a good number of them have.
Most of them do, yes.
Assistant managers.
Yes, sir.
And right now, how many departments do you have solely under you?
A little above 20, I think, 21 or 22.
And how many employees?
Right at 700, full-time, part-time.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, then I'll make a motion to approve as stated by the manager.
Thank you.
I got a motion by Commissioner Berger, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Berger, second by Commissioner Hall. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, gentlemen, I'll call a question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. All righty. Item number 13, new business.
Yes. Gentlemen, this is, this is a request to consider approval and adoption of Rockingham County involuntary commitment transportation plan. The purpose of the, of this plan is to outline the policy and procedures for transporting persons subject to involuntary mental commitments to treatment facilities by the Rockingham County Sheriff's Office or contract transportation providers pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 122C-251 subsection G.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Gentlemen, this is a transportation plan that by statute we have to have in place by, I think it's October 1st, is that correct?
Yes.
Or have to have it to our MCO by October 1st. I've had a chance to look at it, and, and keep in mind, this is a document that's, can be amended as seen fit, and I think each municipality has had an opportunity to look at it as well as the sheriff's department.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Have crafted. So with that in mind, is there any discussion?
I would move for approval as presented.
I got a motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Berger. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Commissioner comments? Tonight, I think I'll start with Commissioner Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What a great evening to honor Ron Norwood and to see his family and friends come out in support of him for all the work, volunteer, all the effort that he has provided to this county. We appreciate that. We also appreciate all you who are here tonight, participating in your government. We appreciate the, the comments, we appreciate the, those who keep us on our toes, and thank you for coming. Again, I appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Berger.
Thank everyone for coming out tonight. Also want to thank the school board for hosting a meeting earlier in the evening. Always good to collaborate with them, and I guess we'll see you in October.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Berger. Commissioner Richardson?
Yeah, once again, congrats to Ron Norwood. Talk to him when you get a chance, he sets a worthy example for our citizenry. The plan is to only have one Rockingham County champion per year, and so I think we chose the right one, but we'll be looking for suggestions. In the meantime, we have a volunteer of the month program, so if you have somebody that you'd like to nominate for that honor, please contact our clerk to the board, and she'll get that on board for you. I've been watching litter, and I don't have any official figures about numbers of trash, but I believe it's going up a little bit, and particularly in those roads that lead to recreation places like the river and the various lakes around. I've talked with the sheriff and the highway patrol, and code enforcement is always on the move here. So we're looking to provide in the future some figures about litterers, how many we're catching to ascertain if, how our program's going as far as enforcement. And we're coming up on flu season, and once again, your county health department is going to have flu shots available, but you need to check your insurance. If you don't have it, you'll be charged, and I can tell you, you'll be charged more for county-provided flu shot than it costs at CVS and certain other places. So you might want to shop around to do that, but by all means, start considering this, especially the elderly folks and the younger folks in our community, to see if we can minimize the impact of, of the flu. And we were told by our folks in the health department that this year's vaccine is expected to be far more effective than ones we've had in the past, getting the prime suspects as far as flu varieties. So thank you all for being here, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Travis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to tell everybody, thank you for coming out. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Norwood, a great man. It's an honor to participate with him receiving that award. As you know, it's festival season, so please go out and visit the towns, go to festivals, enjoy the Rockingham County lifestyle, and spend your money here in Rockingham County so we can get back the sales tax. Also, Steve Bowles, I just want to tell you, thank you for the rescue squad. You know, I've been, for 10 years, been advocating for you, and we've came a long way. We're not done yet, we've still got more to do, but we're still working on it. But let your fellow squad know that I appreciate them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to thank some of our elected officials here tonight, and I hope I got them all, but if I leave anybody out, I'm going to apologize before I get started. But out in the audience, I did see Ms. Amanda Bell with the school board, former mechanic commissioner, Mr. Bobby Stanley for being here, former school board member, Mr. Ron Price for being here, Bonnie Ferguson, Tony Reese, and Royce Richardson from the board of elections. So Kimberly McMichael from the Rockingham County School Board, Paula Rexstraw from the school board, Brent Huss from the school board, and Doug Isley from the school board. If I missed anybody else from the school board, or from the board of elections, or from anywhere else in Rockingham County, I apologize. And Tommy Flint was here earlier, and he's a former member of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners. So, thank you. Just real quick, I know Commissioner Richardson talked about litter, but I'm going to give a, a job well done to the Rockingham County Sheriff's Department. I was going up 220 the other day, and there was a trailer blowing litter all over the place. I made one phone call to Captain Farah, I'm sorry, Colonel Farah back there, I like to call him Colonel, Colonel Farah, and he, he got a hold of somebody, and before you know it, we was able to identify the vehicle, and there was accountability. And it happened that fast. And so I want to appreciate what you guys did. And as somebody mentioned earlier, Riverfest is this weekend, we talked, I know Bobby Stanley was talking about the festival in Stonable. The one in Eden is this weekend, I think it starts at 5:00 on Friday night, I think there's a band there Friday night, and I think it goes all day Saturday. So if you have an opportunity to, to go, please don't hesitate to attend. There may be an opportunity to buy a raffle ticket while you're there, I'm not sure, but please, please attend. And Steve Bowles from the rescue squad, thank you for what you guys do, man, I appreciate it. All the public safety, and you're a big part of it. I spoke the other day at the 9/11 event that was at the sheriff's department, and, and one of the things that we talked about was never forget, and the never forget is, we have so many local heroes that work every day that go out there to run towards the danger that we run from, and that includes the rescue squads. I was at a football game the other night, and I seen a rescue squad member wearing a bulletproof vest, and that's, that's concerning in these times, but we thank you for what you do, for each one of you for what you do. With that being said, gentlemen, closed session awaits us. I'm not going to say we're not going to have anything to announce, the last two times I said that, we've had something we could have announced afterwards. I don't anticipate we'll be in there that long. Thank you for being here, and good evening. We will return after closed session. I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Motion, so moved.
I got a motion, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Richardson, motion by Commissioner Berger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We'll be closed session. I have much to go into, to a journey, not to go in, I'm going to go into the house is what I'm, look, I have much to do a journey, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, hey, look, here's this, I signed, but no one signed up to speak there.